Thank you for being here. I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Florisville City Council's regular meeting. This is Thursday, May the 11th, 2017. And if you would please rise for the invocation. Our thanks to Mr. Bob Herndon for blessing our meeting.
Let us pray, please. I'm Rose Christus, heavenly Father. Dear Lord, we are so grateful for this day. We thank you for life and we thank you for the sanctity of life. It is my fairly night in this meeting that we all conduct ourselves in a businesslike manager and not being spiteful or hateful to each other and respectful for the things that we have to say. I ask that you be with our city council members, past and present, be with all of the citizens of this community as we try to come together and bring our city back to where we know it should be and be made to honor and glory. I ask now that you forgive me the many ways I've failed you. Our prayer is your precious name and true your sake, amen.
Thank you. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance in the Texas pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the life of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. You may be seated. We do have a quorum this evening for our meeting in attendance. It's Councilman David Johns, Councilwoman Gloria Cantu, myself, Mayor Sissy Gonzalez-Dippel, Councilman Nick Neeson, and Councilman Gerard Jimenez. At this time, I'll open the floor to citizens' comments. Excuse me. I ask the citizens, when you come up to the podium, if you would state your name. You do have five minutes, and we thank you for your cooperation and we ask for your consideration. So any citizens' comments at this moment?
Is it too loud?
That's good.
Okay, the reason I'm here before you, you'll see that there is a schedule of officers' training, including myself. And on April the 10th, or excuse me, May the 10th, we received an email from Ms. Turner effective immediately to cancel all training for our police department. I want to go into details a little bit and let y'all know how essential this training is to the department and to the officers. There's a two-year cycle that TCO regulates our commission in the state of Texas. The cycle's about to end in August. Of course, there are some officers that lack either hours or specific courses to train. As you can see on the list that I provided you, some of these classes that have been registered go as far as back as August 31st, 2016, which is mine. As you could see, there's another one in May 7th, February 14th, March 27th of this year, and several others that have been scheduled, like the one we're fixing to have here on the 24th and 25th here at the Event Center. That particular one, which is the Texas Narcotics Officers Association, draws a lot of other officers from other agencies through the state of Texas. This was put together by a former reserve officer by the name of Rudy Glover. I was forgetting his first name, excuse me. And this is sponsored by the TNOA South Region. He's been working pretty hard at it. Finally, we got together with the roadside inn motel to get us a better rate on rooms, which we were able to. There has been probably over 40 officers-plus that have also signed up for this class. So that's going to affect us if this does stand, which is a cancellation of these classes. The other important thing is when these officers don't meet the required hours or classes, there is a reprimand that is issued by the state of Texas by TCO. Of course, that suspends the officer's license. So you have numerous officers on this list, as you can see, that will be affected by And that means, of course, no officers on the streets. I asked Ms. Turner today numerous times if she would reconsider this, and of course, her decision was no. So I'm asking you, Council, to please view this closely, reconsider it on the behalf of the city, not on behalf of me. There are many, many other schedulings that are in place. And there's also a form attached, which is a LEOS fund that we call Law Enforcement Officers Standards of Education, which is provided by Texas State of Crime Controller's Office. They provide us money and funds to educate our officers strictly law enforcement purpose only. That is based on the number of officers per department. That's how they regulate that. It's also attached to it. That is state-funded money, not city money. As you can see, we've got $1,543 in that account. And to cancel something very important to not only the city but the department more so, I don't find it necessary. And it was based on the supposedly the evaluator's preliminary report that was given to Ms. Turner. Why would a report indicate such is beyond me. I mean, a report, that's the last thing a report should say, is no more training for officers for the city of Florisville. That's ridiculous. And that's a safety issue, liability issue for the city of Florisville. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Since it's not on the agenda, we can't discuss. If you'd like to make a citizen's comment about it, you could take your citizen's comment time, but it couldn't be a discussion.
Right.
No, you can do it from your seat there.
Yes. You all have five minutes, just like any citizen. Councilman, can you please, you have to speak into the microphone.
I mean, I don't see, why did we stop this training? I was unaware of that. Or were you aware of this?
Uh-uh.
Can you tell us the reason why, Henry?
She can't, because it's a comment period, just like any other citizen. It can't be a discussion, but you're free to express your thoughts and everything on it.
I just think we shouldn't stop no training. That's one of the monies that we set aside for that. You know, for training for the city, for our employees and for the police officers. I mean, I think that's something that's necessary for all our employees, including the police officers.
Thank you, Councilman. Our next citizen?
I forgot one other thing. I just remembered.
As per the email, all training was canceled. And today, we received an email, I don't have a copy, that there's a specific training that's going to take place Tuesday the 16th that we have to attend. So why is all the other training for the officers that is so important canceled, and this particular one is going to be allowed to take place in our department? Which is something to do with our needs system that we're having to punch in with.
Thank you. Thank you, Chief. Mr. Gonzalez?
Yes. Can you hear me all right? Mayor, Council, I'm Fred Gonzalez and I live in Florisville. Section 312 of our charter entitled Enforcement of Ordinances, Citizen Rights, starts out with the following sentence. City ordinances reflect the needs and wishes of these citizens of Florisville. Clearly, the intentions of the citizens are key in the enactment and/or substantive changes of ordinances. Thus, citizens shall have a significant role in such actions. This means that citizens are to be properly apprised of any such actions and given legitimate opportunity for input. How does this happen? By taking such actions in open meetings and allowing legitimate input. For this to happen, a key part of these meetings is a notification to the citizens in specific terms of the proposed actions. The law requires sufficient information so that citizens can readily tell what's coming their way, so to speak. So what is sufficient? The Texas Supreme Court ruled in a 1988 case where a school board hired a new superintendent under an agenda item label personnel as insufficient, i.e. illegal. The reason? Hiring of a superintendent had much higher public interest than just general personnel matters. At your 27 April meeting, the council approved five new or significantly altered ordinances, some of which imposed significant requirements on citizens, and you did it with the following notification. CNA to approve ordinances as discussed at the March 30 workshop. That was it. Can you honestly say that meets the sufficiency requirement? But giving the benefit of the doubt that the workshop reference was key, let's look at that notification. And I'm quoting verbatim. Proposed unit code codification and changes. Again, what does that mean? Again, as you can honestly, again, can you honestly say that one meets the sufficiency standard? Can you honestly believe that citizens would know what you were proposing with those notifications? Talk about a catch 22. If you can say either yes to either of these questions, then you need a lot of training, believe me. The bottom line, those five changes were illegally voted on, in my opinion. So how do we fix it? One, rerun the whole CNA individually with a proper notification. Secondly, and I like this better, put the whole matter on the November ballot and let the citizens really know what's going on and let them have a real voice. And by the way, Councilman Jimenez was right when he said the subject CNA was improperly done. In closing, I've been before you three times on what I consider violations of the Open Meetings Act. The other two had to do with improperly taking items into executive sessions, one on the police study and the other on the sports facilities. While you have been very nice in allowing my comments, no actions resulted. Well, this violation to me is flagrant, as I've explained. As a citizen, I'm expecting more than just listening. Thus, if there's no evidence of corrective action by the beginning of next month, I will submit an official advisory request to the state Attorney General's Office. At least, you know, at least for me, I'll find out if I'm wrong. Thank you much for your attention.
Thank you, Mr. Gonzalez.
Thank you, Fred. Will say it.
Councilwoman Cantu, did you have a, any other citizen comments this evening? Okay, thank you very much. We'll move on to item, to item 1A, consideration and action to approve the minute meetings from the regular council meeting on April the 27th. Council, you have in front of you a copy of the minutes. Give you a couple of minutes. I know you've had, actually, a couple of days to look them over if you have any questions or you see changes that need to be made. I'll give you a little bit, a little bit longer, otherwise I will entertain a motion to accept the minutes as prepared.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the minutes.
Okay, right here says that Councilman Jimenez stated that he thought it was going to be discussed and was not proper procedure to pass these ordinances. Okay. I left the meeting after y'all voted on the, should that be before or after?
I believe that, Monica, you can correct me? He left before we took him down?
No, he was, there were, if you look at the, let me find it, where it states that he left, we, he voted on, it shows on the chart, he voted on the 2017-007, and he voted on the, he only voted on 2017-007, then he left the meeting at 7:24. Because if you look at the chart, he voted on the 27 ordinance, 2017-007, and then on the other ones, he's counted absent. On each other. Because he left after that one.
But I didn't vote on that one.
No, yes, you voted on that one.
Wait a minute. He left before the ordinance, right?
No, he voted on that one. Because I went back and listened to the report to make sure.
Should we move that notation down under that ordinance?
I can, I can change it. I can move it underneath that ordinance if you, if you like. I can just move that one to before 2017-008.
Is that all right, Councilman Jimenez? Okay.
A second motion.
Okay, I have a motion on the floor to accept the minutes with that small change by Councilman Neeson, seconded by Councilman Jimenez. Any citizens' comments? All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Five zero. Moving on to our presentation and discussion, moving on to 2A, Annexation 2019 Update. We have Chris Stewart with us. Thank you, Mr. Stewart, for being with us.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and Council. It's good to be back here to see you all. I'm going to provide you all this evening with a, an update on where we are with the 2019 municipal annexation plan. And this is part of a process that we started not just last August, but even several years prior to that. We began working with the Planning and Zoning Commission to develop a recommendation on areas that we knew were outside the city limits but receiving city services either directly in the form of utilities or indirectly being adjacent. We also had had conversations with county staff about kind of the nature of our city limits jogging in and out and that being difficult to administer for both the county and the city, particularly when it came to 911-type issues. But we began that process several years ago. We undertook a small annexation that was done under what's known as the 43052 age exception, so fewer than 100 properties. That's how that was done. But we came back and said, you know, we need to be strategic about this, we need to be direct. And so we started the state-required municipal annexation plan. And that plan sets forth a procedure by which you establish what areas you want to annex, you establish service plans for how you plan to service those areas, and then you set them into the plan after you hold public hearings to allow for the public input. And then after a three-year period, once that's set, then you can start actually beginning the annexations and you have a small window there at the end of three years to make that happen. So the little packet I brought for y'all explains what municipal annexation plan does, kind of some of the policy intent, why we want to do that, but then also kind of carved out some of these areas and shows us, you'll see a little map that folds out. The colored areas are the areas that we have included in the 2019 municipal annexation plan. The red dashed line is our current city limits. As we began this process, we went through a real thorough examination of the city maps and the deed records and everything, and worked with the surveyor to come up with the official city limits map for 2016. And that's what became our, our basis.
Who was the dark red?
I'm sorry?
The dark red?
The, the dark red?
Annexation, do you have an agreement?
On, on this, you're talking about on this map?
Yes.
With the red and the blue? So another part of the law requires us to offer an agreement to any property that has an agricultural exemption. So we were required to offer them an agreement that says, you don't have to come into the city limits if you're not, if you're still working with your agricultural property. We're not going to require you to come in. But we need to have an agreement about when you are ready to develop, how that happens. And so that allows the city to continue to grow its boundary, that agreement does, to continue to grow its boundary, but allow the agricultural landowner to continue doing what they're doing and not be subject to taxing it.
I understand that, but when it comes down to put your sewer lines and everything else, if you're going to have to come back and recap into that system because someone decides to come in to turn their, sell the property or whatever and take the exemption away, that's, that's going to be pretty hard for the city to go back in and say, well, you know what? We gotta, now we gotta provide sewer and water and everything else if we don't, if we're not tapping into that system. So is there something better that we could come up with?
Well, for, for some of these areas, we're, we have to make a decision when we set the final service plan about how we're going to service them. And so it may be that we leave them, we leave them without sewer service because it wouldn't make sense to do that and because ordinarily, they wouldn't require sewer service until they start development. So that...
But do you follow what I'm saying?
I don't know that I do.
Okay, I've got a problem.
Okay.
Now, I wanted, I'm going to put a business there. Now I want it to become city property. I mean, just as is. Now, am I going to have to pay for an extra service for my sewer and the water, or is it going to be already ready for that?
It depends on the service plan. If, if the service plan calls for sewer to be extended and that sewer is extended, then you'll have that available to you and depending on how the council sets it up, you may be subject...
Chris, if I may. Councilman, on the map that you've got, in talking with Mindy over here, the only place that doesn't already use Florisville water or sewer is like that S that's down by the, the Event Center at the bottom of that. All the other red areas...
You're talking about the new properties?
Yeah, all the other red areas already are on Florisville water and sewer, even though they're outside of the city.
Okay, even the ones coming up past?
The ones up...
Riverbend? Yeah.
Okay. Some of them have subjects above the water, right? We'd stand there with services out that far.
We've already done that?
Yes.
Do they pay taxes in Florisville? Or not? They don't pay taxes?
Not right now.
No, but even if they did, does it go to us or is it going to stay?
Not, if the second that they decide to develop that property and it goes from being a ranch or agriculturally exempted like it is, then they start paying city taxes on that portion. So if they decide to sell it to somebody that puts up a strip mall on there, suddenly that part pays taxes to the city because it's no longer ag exempt.
But will the money go to the city or will it stay at Riverbend?
No, no, once, once it goes, becomes non-ag exempt, it comes to the city. That's not part of the tip, as they call it, the tourist tip area.
Right.
Thank you.
Does that answer your question, Mr. Jimenez? So, excuse me. So the, the various areas basically reflect areas of different, differing utility service and differing utility availability. And so that's how we broke up the areas. The map with the red and blue that you are referring to shows those properties in the areas that we know to be ag exempt, and so those properties will receive a non-development annexation agreement, which thankfully, Mr. Hug just refers to them as NDAs. And those that are blue will receive a regular notice of annexation. The last page here is the schedule that we're following, and this is determined by the statute. And I've updated it here a little bit to kind of show you where we're at. We will have a couple of public hearings coming up next month, and we're going to be working on the notice process for that here very shortly. But you can see towards the, towards the end, by the time we get through the summer, after the annexation agreements are all set, those who wish to enter into those agreements, then we'll prepare the final sum, final service plan for each area over the winter. And then we've got to sit on the sidelines for a little bit. And the earliest date that we can start the annexations would be in the end of August of 2019, and we'll have to have concluded those by the end of September of 2019. So that's the, the schedule, how it's got to run. That's our process. This is the map that we set forward. I'm going to continue to work with your city staff to make sure that this process happens correctly. And I'm available for any questions at this point if you have any other questions. Anything I needed to add, anything I missed?
I don't, these are not on this. The only potential itch in our plan is the Texas Legislature coming in. There's been legislation adopted in the Senate, it's before the House right now, that would essentially end involuntary annexation in Texas. And so if that's the case, that would change this and it would have to go to a vote of the property owners. But that's still, TML is strongly against it. We're still waiting to hear on final there. And then, but like I said, it has passed the Senate, and if it passes the House, it's likely the government would sign it. So that would be a big itch. But as for right now, this is the plan we stick to until the state changes the rules on us.
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments for Mr. Stewart? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
May I ask Chris the question?
Sure.
This, I'm going to go back, Chris. I'll ask you a question on something else. How do we do to set up a meeting to discuss the preliminaries with a Dr. K??
That's not part of this agenda item, so we can talk about that after the meeting, get together with the standard procedure.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on to item 2B. We have a code compliance update. Our community development director, Mindy Ryden.
Are you okay? Yes. Good evening. I have our code compliance update. After receiving, excuse me, a list of addresses from PD back in February, we created a spreadsheet of 50 different addresses. There was originally about 100, so we're doing 50 at a time. Out of the 50, we had our code compliance employee photograph them, the properties. We inspected them twice.
Did you give us the paper on that or not?
It should be in your packet.
It's in your packet. Should be under B. Yes. Okay.
Okay, so we photographed the properties, we inspected them to make sure they were indeed not in compliance with our city ordinances. We sent out the original letter requesting that they contact the city or come into compliance. Out of the 50, 38 addresses came into compliance or contacted the city, saying that they needed more time or they had, were lived out of state and was working on coming into compliance. Out of the 52, only two citations were given for refusing to comply, and six addresses will be re-inspected. So we got a really good turnout out of the 50, 38 had contacted the city and, or either or came into compliance.
Can you change to yellow, where we can tell what is yellow and what is white?
Sure.
And the red one is the one that are not?
The two red are the ones that the citations were given. The blue will require a second inspection. And the ones in sort of yellowish white are the ones that are, either came into compliance, contacted the city, you know, asked for more time. Some of them lived out of state, you know, were working, could only work on their properties on the weekends, or you had to haul off a car or something like that. But they did contact the city in good faith to come to compliance.
What's the process on the red ones? What's the process on the red ones?
They were issued citations.
After a citation?
Then they go to, it goes to municipal court.
Oh.
And from what I understand, one of the two has already contacted the municipal court and has agreed to meet with the judge.